Thursday, November 20th, 2014, addition of the Auburn Zone of Appeals Meeting. Before we get started, a little housekeeping to do, we have to inform you that the meeting is being televised live, also will be recorded for replay on the local access channel. So, does anybody recording the meeting right now? Do we have anyone in the audience recording? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our first hearing tonight's meeting is a seven o'clock applicant, Welcome Homes Incorporated requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for construction of two family dwellings on Elmwood Street, rear Gibson Road, Auburn, Mass., map 12 parcel 208. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you please approach the podium, sir? Could you give your name to the record, please?
Sure, hi. Peter Haughey Jr. I'm at 163 Old Meeting House Road.
Could you spell the last for me, please?
H-A-U-G-E.
Okay, could you give us a brief overview of what you'd like to do?
Yep. I'm Patrick Burke, project manager for the HST Group, civil engineer representing Welcome Homes LLC. We're coming with a special permit to allow two family dwellings on five lots fronting on Gibson Road. Gibson Road is a private road that enters off of Elmwood Street. The lots, we divided, subdivided the lots into five lots. They all have the required 19,000 square foot area and required frontage. They meet the setback requirements. We're just requesting a special permit to allow duplexes to be placed on each of the lots. We also have the area, the land area, to with frontage on High Ridge Road. If we did a conventional subdivision, we could get 10 lots in there. We have 102,000 square feet total area. We could subdivide it and get the 10 units that we're proposing under the conventional subdivision with lots without a special permit. We chose to come in with duplexes because it would be less intrusive on the hill. The site slopes from Gibson Road to the north towards High Ridge Road very steeply. It's about a three to one, four to one slope. So, they require additional earth movement if we did do the conventional homes off of High Ridge Road. What we're showing here, the darker green here is the grassed area we're proposing. And the remaining trees, right now it's forested. The remaining woods that we're allowed to keep now, if we were allowed to have the duplexes, is this darker green color here. If we did come in with the conventional zoning, there would be much more clearing and earth movement with the development as a conventional one. So, that would be one of the pluses of allowing the duplexes. We're also able to tie into public water, public sewer off of Gibson Road with this site plan. We've provided stormwater management. There's a drainage swale going along the back of the homes that goes into detention pond that complies with the two 10, 100-year storm events and meets the requirements from the planning board. We're also being permitted to the, we're requesting a special permit for fill for the site too through the planning board, and that's coming up also.
Okay. For the members of the board, Mr. Cussey, do you have any questions?
I do. This grade is like, where are these houses? I don't even understand. If I was up there on the road, up on the road, it's a funny. It goes straight down.
Yeah, that's where we're required to, we're replacing walls along the back of the site.
Yeah, I see the 12-foot walls and all, but I mean, the water runoff too is, I can see they have catch basins and then it's going to go into the rip raft, but it seems to me there's going to be a lot of water.
Yep, there exists, right now currently, there's existing a lot of water coming off the site. We've been working with the DPW closely too, to work with the swales. There's also, there's a swale proposed behind the wall here. It also collects drainage coming off of 86 and 88, lots 86 and 88 on Elmwood Street. So, that's going to capture the road. We provided a tension pond that meets the net discharge there. And then there's rip raft outlet that will slow down the drainage outside of the tension pond also. And maintaining the tree line along the thing, along High Ridge Road also will allow the water to spread out along there instead of if we did a conventional subdivision.
I also have an issue with traffic. I mean, this is like, you know, you're going to have 10 families moving in on a small road that is going to be exiting onto Elmwood.
Yes.
That's, I think it's a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. That's a busy road, Elmwood. I have a bit of an issue with traffic. Lot of pressure on the neighborhood with 10 families moving in there.
Yes, there was also be, with the 10 units, if we did the regular conditional subdivision, traditional, we'd also get the 10 units also.
My issue for now.
Okay. Anything further? Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions for you. One is the, and I may need a little education here, but I'm looking at your plan and I'm seeing that the setback from the road is 20 feet. 20.5, I think it is?
Yes.
But that 20 feet, this is where the education may came, come in, that 20 feet represents an easement. So, that should that easement ever be needed, it would be directly at somebody's front door.
With this, with this plan, we're improving Gibson Road. That easement was to allow sewer to go down the road before we were going to improve Gibson Road. Now, we're resurfacing Gibson Road, that easement can be, will be removed because we don't no longer need it for the sewer.
Do you have it in writing that the easement will be removed?
You can condition that if you would like. That easement was, for the purpose was for, to serve the Gibson Road lots for a pump sewer to get up to Gibson Road.
Okay, do you, was the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board approached before any of the site work was done? It's pretty well stripped, and when I stood there and looked down, the first thing that hit me was erosion or anything going down that hill. And you want to reference this, or may I?
You may.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go with that.
We have a letter from one of the abutters stating facts of what I was in, what I was afraid of today, and I can see that it's being stated that there is a significant issue with water, erosion, rocks, things going down the hill. So, was the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board approached before you stripped that land?
We weren't involved with the stripping of land originally. We have been in contact with the building inspector and the engineering department. They're asking us to develop a swift plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, that will address the whole site clearing issues. There has been problem in the past. There's a silt fence and hay bale fence there now where there was, it's mainly construction issues from previous construction.
But nobody was approached prior to you stripping the land?
I'm not sure. So, when we started the construction on Elmwood.
Could you move that mic? I'm having a tough time hearing you. I'm sorry.
Closer or further away? Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, sorry. So, when we applied for the building permits for Elmwood Street, there were two single families there, and we submitted the applications for those, and there were no requirements to go for any additional filling or anything like that when I applied originally. Nick Ann Tanavicka was the building inspector at that time. And then when there was a change in the first week of July, the building inspector, Chris Lund, kind of basically took over there and informed me of a bylaw about if you bring in more than 500 yards of fill, then you need a special permit. So, upon that, what we've done for the last three months since about that, the project was halted then, and I worked with HS&amp;T to develop a plan, cut fill analysis, and all of this grading information, and the swale that basically handles all the water runoff that, excuse me, that's currently not 100% complete yet. It is a tough site. We are working on it, and the swale that the, my engineer and the town engineer, Bill Coyle, worked out, will handle all of the runoff. So, there was a little bit of a problem when I applied originally for the building permit. I wasn't informed that there was a need for any additional landfilling permits, and then when I found that out, we stopped and then we moved forward. We got that a plan approved through the highway department with Bill Coyle and the building inspector, and they approved that plan, and then basically that's where we stand today.
I am, as Mr. Cussey said, I have some issues with that grade. And I have another question, and that would be, in our bylaws, we have two, the use of two different words. One is a building and one is a structure. And the height of a structure, as it states, cannot be, it's the, it's the height in feet shall be the vertical distance measured from the mean of the finished ground level adjoining the entire structure to the highest extension on any part of the structure. Our restriction is 25 feet. You're going to be beyond 25 feet guaranteed. You'd have to be bringing in thousands of yards of fill to fill out enough so that it, on a slope like that, if we went by that definition of a structure, that you wouldn't be beyond 25 feet. Now, that mean that's described is the average. So, if you took the slope and you took the average to the peak, you're going to be beyond 25 feet with that severe a slope.
I would have to, I'd have to check that.
Pardon?
I'd have to address that, I'd have to check that through the bylaw.
There would have to be, and if you did, I guess I'd want to say that I absolutely feel that the planning board is going to have to look at this along with the Conservation Commission because the amount of water and erosion coming down that hill, you can't get ground-holding trees or grass or anything in there fast enough to prevent what's going to be cascading down that hill. And from the letter we have, okay, has already happened, to, to the point where it's a safety concern. It's affecting other people's lives where nobody will come to visit them. There's a safety concern. I think I would want the planning board, as well as the Conservation Commission, as well as the answers that we've gotten tonight to all be considered, or the answers that we've got so far. I'm only one person so far.
The planning board is reviewing this for the, for the special permit for fill. They'll be reviewing the drainage.
Pardon me?
The planning board is, we've applied to the planning board for a special permit for the fill, so they will, they will be, they're actively reviewing it now.
Well, I don't think it's just for the fill that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the whole project, partly the fill because something's got to hold that fill in. You just put fill in and it doesn't compact.
That, we have.
It's useless.
Retaining walls, we're replacing retaining walls to hold the fill, to fill back.
And I think the planning board would want to take a hard look at the type of retaining wall. There's a current retaining wall there now that we passed on for Mr., for Mr. Knott that we asked specific questions about that retaining wall, and it's there now and looks beautiful.
Yes.
I'm sure the planning board would want to ask the construction of it, the composition of it. That's where I am on this.
Okay. Anything further?
All set.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
Not yet.
Okay. Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't repeat some of the line of questioning that other board members have repeated. Thanks for being here, gentlemen. And I did look at the site. I think that it's generous to say that it's a challenging site to work with, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of that. I want to go in a slightly different direction because I understand that you've been working this up to this point. So, what has been approved based on, I mean, what, I just, I get, I need a sense of, as I look at the site today and understand the permits, not only the fill, but the permitting process that you're currently undertaking with other boards, what has been approved for you to accomplish to date in comparison to the way that site looks right now? What are you allowed to do with that site right now?
Right now, we don't have permits for anything on that site right now.
Okay. And I wasn't baiting that in any, please continue, I'm sorry.
We haven't actually applied for any permits on Gibson Road. What we did was we subdivided the land and went to the planning board and A&amp;R'd the lots off. So, currently there exist five, just about half-acre lots, 102 by 200, and those are approved by the planning board for single families. So, we can do single families there, but we're trying to come to the, to the board to, you know, upgrade one road instead of two roads. Like we were trying to say before, we could go and upgrade High Ridge Road, but we just didn't want to have that much infrastructure. Thought it would be better overall for the project to stay on Gibson Road, which in my opinion is the nicer of the two roads. And, you know, High Ridge Road is probably only developed, I would say, maybe halfway of what it actually shows on the recorded plan from 1929. And the Gibson Road one is actually pretty much fully developed, all the way down to the end. There's a turnaround at the end now.
And that's very helpful in my line of questioning. So, one, just if we can stay on that for a moment, you have approval based on the way that the lots, the lots have been subdivided for that number of dwellings.
Yes, that's right. Five single-family homes on Gibson Road.
Okay. And that approval came from?
Planning board.
From the planning board directly?
Yep. We took the whole parcel, including the two on Elmwood Street, and subdivided them all together.
Okay. And they were basing that just based on size?
Frontage and area requirements, right.
Frontage and area requirements, okay.
Yes, and they all did, they all did go out to the site or several members, I'm not sure if they all went, but it seemed as though that most of them went, and their concerns were, you know, the grade, like, like we're talking about. Everyone's kind of aware that the steep grades. But in the bylaws, basically, they read through, and when Adam was the town planner, he was still here, he chimed in and basically said that we can't say no to the buildability of single families. It's really more of how are we going to do it? And we decided when we did our approach to put the houses up on Gibson Road because instead of having real steep driveways going down to the back of the land, it seemed as though the best way to develop the land after a lot of engineering review was to put them, you know, close to Gibson and then put a wall on the back to, you know, have a flat front yard, have a full walkout basement, and a flat backyard to the wall, and a swale at the bottom of the wall.
Okay. And it would be your intention to take those five half-acre lots, give or take, and put duplexes on each?
That's the proposal right now, yes.
Okay. So, you've, in a sense, asked for a double capacity because the original, the planning board had approved single-family homes.
Well, we actually, there's enough area and frontage to do 10, but we went for five because I didn't want to have to upgrade High Ridge Road.
Okay.
So, if we have to upgrade and do 10, then I would need to re-subdivide the land, do five and five, and come with a road improvement plan for High Ridge.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I do have one right now. From the back of the house or the proposed house to the wall, how much, how far?
30 feet.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
So, some of the questions have already been answered that I plan on bringing up, but one of the things I have is I see this as a sort of a multi-permitted issue here beyond 3.2.2.1, as that the retaining walls you're recommending to the rear of your lots, you have a 12-foot, 12-foot, 7-foot, 12-foot, and those walls in themselves would require permitting also. And that's not to be addressed here. So, I see this as a complete plan without, with an incomplete application at this time, in my opinion. So, that's really the concern that I have, is that there's other, many other facets to this plan that's not being addressed just under this request this evening. So, that's all I really have for now, and I'd like to open up. Do we have any abutters present? Would you like to speak? Okay, if you could just, one at a time, go to the microphone, introduce yourself, please spell your first and last name, and give us your address, please. If you do that a little slowly, because I have to write it down myself also.
Last name's Anastasi, with an A-N-A-S-T-A-S-I.
Your first name, please, sir?
Robert.
Okay, and your address?
166 Hampton Street. I plan on making my verbal comments, but I actually have a written testimony drafted up. I'm not sure if that would be able to be put in the record if I would give that to you now.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Actually have. As I said, my name's Robert Anastasi. I reside together with my wife, Jennifer, at 166 Hampton Street. It's a single-family ranch on the corner of Hampton Street and Elmwood Street. We purchased our single-family home in October of 2013. We consciously chose a suburban neighborhood comprised of single-family homes to settle down and raise our family, and I'm here tonight concerned with protecting not only my investment, but our quality of life and the suburban character of our neighborhood. This proposed development of five two-family structures is not suitable for the proposed site, from my opinion. It's, at best, the closest multiple family dwelling is located about a quarter of a mile down Hampton Street next to a medical facility in a cross from a 55-plus living community, and that is closer towards Route 12, based on my understanding. My understanding is the proposed single-family dwellings, as you mentioned, that would not be suitable for single-family homes. I don't really understand why that was, why that was truly abandoned, but it certainly would have been well permitted for the site. The fact that the applicant is proposing not one, not two, but actually five two-family homes on vacant land is totally out of character with the exclusive single-family character of the neighborhood. It's essentially creating a street completely populated with two-family homes that is being plopped down in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. And from what I can see, the motivation is strictly to maximize profit at the expense of the neighborhood. Scattered two-family dwellings is one thing, but a whole row of an entire street of cookie cutter, two-family dwellings is unacceptable from what I can see as sound zoning practice and my humble opinion, but actually constitute a proper, not constitute a proper basis for a special permit. It's going to result in excess traffic and additional unplanned burdens on the municipal services of the town, whether that be water, sewer, police, schools, et cetera. And then I have many concerns as far as safety. The extreme slope depicted on the project site is grossly inappropriate for multifamily dwellings, and in what I can see is an unsuccessful attempt to actually address the problem with 12-foot retaining walls. Not only is the, it's very obvious how this is extremely dangerous, especially considering the, you know, the families who would be living there and the multitude of children who actually live in the neighborhood. And there's no information, my knowledge, whether any blasting is actually going to be proposed as far as impact from erosion. And upon, I've actually viewed the site plan. Upon initial viewing, the proposed two-family structures appear to lack appropriate screening, from what I can tell, and landscaping that would actually be conducive to the appearance of a single family. And on the site plan, it actually states that Gibson Road will remain a private road. I know you mentioned that, but, and it says it actually will be improved, but not necessarily to Auburn Town standards. It just states that it will be paved to a width of 20 feet only, having curbing only on one side, and the extent of a sidewalk installation is unclear at this time. And this, you know, this raises significant public safety concerns. The project proposes increase of the density development of the row of two-family structures. Most importantly, that's a residential neighborhood where children play and will be exposed to unnecessary amounts of safety concerns and substandard roadway designs. And the proposed paving, another work to improve Gibson Road, also raises concerns for those of us who are abutting property owners as my, like myself, for this private way. And the impact on our legal rights, our responsibilities, and our risk of exposure resulting from the proposed road work is completely unclear at this time. I'll actually have to check my deed and my land records to see what the potential impact on my property rights will be. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If you could approach the microphone, please, sir. Just give us your first and last name and your address.
Scott Waldridge, 15 Gibson Road, W-O-O-L-D-R-I-D-G-E.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of concerns that I'd like to bring up. One is we have well water, and one of the whole reasons why there's so many problems with water and everything down there is springs run directly underneath there. So, is this going to affect our well, first of all? Also, if you were going to be putting town sewage in, remember that you have to pump up to the road or you have to pump down. Now, a few, probably about 15 years ago now, we had a big problem, the next road down, where one of those pumps failed, and the whole area was completely flooded with sewage. And considering I'm the house that's at the end there, I have that concern. Anything else? Yeah, the road's been getting pretty bad.
If you want to approach, ma'am, you could go up there as well. That's okay.
I didn't know we had to do one at a time. My name is Tricia Waldridge. I also live at 15 Gibson Road. Several of the concerns that I have also is if it's only going to be 20 feet, is that going to be able to support emergency vehicles? We have had issues in the past with emergency vehicles not being able to get down to 15 Gibson Road. We have had tow trucks, like major tow trucks, stuck and having to have them in. We've had fire trucks get stuck down there. Is this going to be able to support emergency services? Can we support emergency services to duplex houses? Will they be able to get down the grade to give help as necessary? So, I was concerned about that. I really am concerned in general with building houses on those grades. We have had issues for as long as I've lived there with drainage going down, stopping up, washing out the road, washing down to our neighbors on High Ridge. We have to be very careful in general, just living there with the traffic, with how much that is. If we're having 10 families come in and out, even with paved, that's a lot of wear and tear on a very short road that in and of itself is at a steep curve and an incline. With building up the grade, I have a friend who's a civic geologist, I don't know if that's the actual title, they're worried about the shale and the clay being able to hold up that kind of building up with that level of fill. And I don't know if we'd have, we've had a geologist look at that, see if it is possible. We live on it with the clay and the shale as it is. As our house is at the very end, we're down at the bottom of a hill, we have a plateau, and then we have another bottom of the hill. We regularly see shifting. Our foundation has been moved as it is with the shifting. So, and our foundation, how old is our house?
Well, the problem with the foundation originally was due to the fact that there was blasting, there was actually unapproved blasting that had occurred from another development further up, and basically our house, our foundation was cracked at one time, and then there were a couple of others on top of that. So, the blasting is definitely an issue.
It is, but there's still the shifting, which is a problem. If these houses are on an incline like that, even with the fill, that fill has to shift, it has to move, given with the water running down all the way from Hamptons up the top, right? From that coming down, that water has to go somewhere. It goes through our basement regularly, we have to have a sun pump. That water's going to go down, the land is going to shift. So, I think we do need to have someone look and see if geology, like with the stones and rocks, if that is even feasible without having those houses just fall down into High Ridge or anything. So, I think that's an important concern that we need to have, like someone looking at the ecology and the stonework to look at. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If you just approach the microphone, sir, give us your name and address.
My name's Stephen Knott at 90 Elmwood Street, K-N-O-T-T. I was just here, I think, a month ago or so. I approved, I asked for approval for the wall to go in. Obviously, that wall was put in to hold up the side of my Obviously, that wall was put in to hold up the side of my house that I was losing the grade on. So, just on my house alone, which is at the corner on the top of the hill, I'm having an erosion problem just myself. Not now, obviously, I had to put up a wall to keep it there. Just slightly concerned with the erosion, have kind of the same concerns that everybody else does. Interesting point on the easement. I had no idea that easement was lifted, and was it lifted from both sides of the road or not? Because that, you know, I just went through the whole process of putting a, an extensive wall behind an easement to make sure that I'm not in anybody's way of, of doing anything. That's really my own concern. And general traffic on the road, like everybody already stated already. That's about it, just generally concerned with having two families. I have no problems with single-family homes, that's not an issue with me, I just think that there's a little extensive with two-family homes on that road. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Dan Cooney, I live on High Ridge Road. I'm the guy that's taking all the heat. I talked to Pete today, he's the landowner, and he's telling me, oh, I've seen this, I see the guys who work there. He's trying his best, again, I would imagine, with the people he has working for him, but I'm the guy that's get, I didn't write that letter. I'm the guy that's getting the rocks, you want to see the silt, my garden's wiped out and my pool's knocked down. How much more is going to happen with those? But if Pete wants to build five houses, they're single families on High Ridge Road, I hope everybody owns a half-track, because most of the winter, I can't park down there, and I got a four-wheel drive. So to improve High Ridge Road, the town of Auburn has already been down there this year, so far since this project has started, four times to redo the road. Because, I have pictures, my wife has the pictures of it, we don't have them here, I should have brought them, I was going to bring them the next one. Road was absolutely washed out, undrivable. So a regular person in a car come down, no, it's not going anywhere. So I gotta park up in front of my neighbor Joel Creelman's house, because I can't make it home. But I'm just saying, what he's got to do is what he has to do, that's like, yeah, they'll be down in my ear too, with the rocks and the silt. But, that's all, that's all I got to say, these people have said a mouthful. I feel bad for him, should have never bought that piece of land, because it's not buildable. And yes, I did work construction for twenty-five years, for Ed Stroud, you guys must know him, used to work here for the town and such. The property's not buildable, as simple as that, I don't care what you put there, chicken coop, it's going to come down the hill. That's all I have to say, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Where does he live? Oh, High Ridge.
Can I let the opener up now if I could to our alternates? Mr. Nataoli, do you have any input?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Well, my concern too would be with looking at this road and seeing the way the cul-de-sac ends is, when you plow it, where's that snow going to go? Because it just ends, it's going to go, unless you're going to truck it out of there, I don't see where it's going to go. I do appreciate though, you know, that you came here, and just for the board's dedication, they don't need, if they were single-family homes, they wouldn't have to come before any board, it's all by right, so no planning board or anything. And because they're coming for a two-family generates a special permit, it automatically goes for the planning board for review, site plan review. So, I mean, I know we're talking about referring it, but it automatically goes there. It is a difficult site, and it's been here before. Again, the, not to rehash what everyone said about the, about the topography of this, it's challenging, but it's so narrow, again, plowing, that house on the end will probably get buried somehow, I don't know where you're going to put the snow. And that's, that's a concern. Again, if you have to limit the, it's already a narrow road with the snow, you have fire trucks, things like that passing. I don't know if a school bus could get down there, like, well, we can't with the turnaround, if there's children involved. I mean, I can understand you trying to maximize the profits at this at all, but it is definitely challenging, and that's one concern for safety I have.
Okay. Is that all? Ms. Place?
I'm just reiterating what everybody else has said, you know, the safety concerns for the, for the town and for the families that are there, I have real concerns about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to go back to the members of the board. Mr. Cussy, do you have anything else you'd like to add after hearing all the testimony?
No, I was wondering if this, could this be sent out to be reviewed by Graves?
I don't think we can necessarily pick the engineering firm per se, but we could, if we decided to agree to the permits, we could also make as a condition of the permit a peer review?
Yeah, I'd like to definitely get some engineers involved here, because this is tough, there's a lot of water.
Mr. Chicolow. Chicolow, excuse me.
No, just as, as a matter of clarification, the, I did refer to this as a letter, it is a summary of a phone call that was placed, the facts are still the same, but this is a summary of a phone call, I referred to it as a letter, and Mr. Cooney correctly stated that he did not write this. This is a summary of a phone call to the board's office, just as a matter of clarification.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roach? Anything further?
No, I mean, no other further questions, I just, I have to agree that for people who purchase a single-family house in this neighborhood, to have this just plop down next to you, I have concerns about that.
Okay. Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief, because I don't want to sound preachy, because I've, I've got a great appreciation for developing land. And I also believe though, that one, one of the most important things in raw land is how you site a house, the placement. And, and I, I have both a personal and professional opinion that not every piece of land should be built on, based on topography, based on the situation. I, I do appreciate someone owning a piece of land and wanting to develop, not only for an economic benefit, but for, for just a betterment of that site. From what I see that's been done to that lot, I'm, I'm concerned that all of that's been done to this point, because I, I have to honestly question whether or not that should be a developed spot. I think that it's a, a very challenging consideration. I'm concerned, and I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't look to comment on any approval that any other board in town has approved for a site, even for a single-family homes. But I go back to my own, my own opinion that because you have a piece of land and it's, it's cited in a spot where you may build a home or, or a dwelling, that doesn't mean that you should develop it based on, on where it is. I think my largest concern is safety. There have been a lot of instances that have been cited for egress, for traffic, for, for the winters, I mean, the well concerned me, to bring up the topography, and I didn't think to question that. We didn't question these good gentlemen about whether or not there would be a blasting issue, and I'm not asking you to respond to that, because I, I would have an overall safety concern in developing anything there, even single-family homes. And I recognize that may be a personal comment, but I'm, I'm challenged with, with putting dwellings on that spot.
Okay. Mr. Chicolow?
I do have a further comment, and that is, whether the special permit is granted or whether it is not granted, there are some specific safety, as well as specific issues that impact the people in this room right now. So that whether the permit is or isn't granted, okay? I guess I'm going to look for a mechanism to address the concerns that these people have right now, especially the safety concerns with somebody having rocks rolling down their hill, until they add, being that the land has been stripped already. Whether there is another application put in, with everything in order, that is for duplexes or, or single-family homes, that is going to take some time. Meanwhile, there's some ongoing issues with the winter coming, that these people are going to have to live through. And those issues have been created already, so that I guess I'm looking for a mechanism to address those issues right now.
Okay. The applicants would like to approach the podium again, please? If you'd like to address some of the issues that you've heard, concerns tonight?
Yes, thank you. So I took some notes, and when I, when I purchased a piece of land, I tried to, you know, talk to the, the abutters that were out anyway around, and I have talked to most of them, most of them, personally. And just actually, one of the biggest problems that I had with a safety concern is, I didn't, actually was never called on it. I did find out, I got a call from the building inspector yesterday, and one of the abutters had called and expressed a concern. And as soon as I heard that, I went down there, I checked it out myself, and I had a meeting with that abutter today for over an hour, discussing the problem. I had given my cellphone to all the abutters I had met about a year ago, and if they had any problems, to call me. I know he said that he did misplace my phone number, but I'm just letting you know that I did attempt to try to alleviate any concerns that came up, through, you know, personal interaction and my cellphone, my personal cellphone, I live very close by, I'm there, if not every day, every other day. We did have that problem with the building inspector switching and putting the plan on hold for several months, while Bill Coyle reviewed the plan that was approved. And until that, there's a big swale that's being built and things, and until it's actually built, which we're hoping will be finished in the next week or two, there's just been a mountain of, of material that was moved because of the, that five-hundred-yard bylaw I was aware of, we're moving fill off of eighty-eight and eighty-six to the other lots. So we're in the process of doing that, and there's been some significant improvements. But I did take some notes, and I just wanted to comment on a few of the things from each of the abutters, their main concerns anyways. No, there's no blasting, there has been no ledge whatsoever anywhere, I actually had to bring in rock, I couldn't even find any real rock on the site. So there is, there would be no, to my knowledge anyway, and, you know, based off of the, the construction that we've seen so far, no need for, for blasting. The safety concern about children and things like that, anytime a wall is built over four feet, it requires a safety fence at the top of it, which will be in place. So you're really looking at, from Gibson Road, a flat front yard, a full walkout basement, the sides of the houses are sloped, and then a flat backyard to the wall. At the bottom of that wall is a swale, and then it grades down to High Ridge. There have been, since I purchased the property, some significant road improvements on Gibson Road. When I purchased it, it was not as passable as it is now, let's just put it lightly. It was a kind of a private road in pretty disrepair. And when I went to the planning board and I consulted with some of the members on, in the bylaw, what's required for a private road is no pavement and eighteen feet wide. So, there, there are, in the deeds, there are two twenty-foot rights of way. And so it makes up the forty-foot right of way that you see here. I worked with Bill Coyle extensively, and H-S-N-T has, to find a way to make his life and the abutters' life better over there by paving the road. I don't need to pave this road in order to build single-family houses on there. And I understand the concern, and everyone thinks that the builder makes a ton of money on this, and I, and I just have to say that the, the main reason for this design is because we're trying to reduce the amount of cost of pavement and infrastructure. Because if we do two roads, obviously, it would be double, but if I went with single families, I don't have to pave this road. So I think that's an important point, that I'm going to be improving. Another abutter made a comment about well water, we are planning on running town water right down to the end of the street, so you could always tie in there at that point. So that kind of, you know, if you wanted to, it's not a requirement, obviously, but it would be available where it isn't available today. Let me just see, pumps, yes, we're aware that you do pump up to Elmwood Street, so each individual house would have a sewer ejector, which actually, when I met with Jeff Mitchell about that, he's very confident with the E-one pumps, and said that's a perfect solution for that area to be developed. Washout, I mentioned that already, so the washout that had been happening on Gibson Road, in my opinion, is significantly mitigated at this point, because we, we widened out Gibson Road and we brought in regrinds, asphalt regrinds, so you can actually pass that. And we cleared the land, and you actually have a turnaround, if anyone went down there, you can actually turn your car around. You might not be able to turn a fire truck around right now, but you can definitely turn your car around, and it's significantly better than it was when I bought the property. And I did mention the twenty-foot width, so on a private road, it's required to be eighteen feet. So twenty feet is in excess of what it needed to be. The easement issue that came up, I granted myself that easement, I can take that easement away. The reason I, I granted myself that easement is because if we bring, if we didn't want to pave the road and keep it the way it is, I was going to put the water in sewer line, or just the sewer line, probably in drill wells, in that easement, and that way, I don't have to improve Gibson Road. So, that's, that's a no-brainer for me, that's, it, it's one or the other, we don't need that easement, but it is recorded, because I originally was not planning on paving and upgrading Gibson Road the way I am in this plan. Let me see, snow, the only other thing about snow is, I can't really comment, I don't think it would, it's, the town still plows, and Bill Coyle said they plow and they maintain private roads for emergency access, so there's not going to be any more snow, because there's more houses over there. So I'm not really sure what else to say about that place. And the only other comment is, I know for a fact that, I don't have the addresses, but I know very close, in close proximity to this neighborhood, there are several duplexes on Hampton Street. So, yes, the abutter on Hampton might have the addresses of those, but it's not that far from this site. And, and yes, he's right, there are, there's probably three of them, I'm not exactly sure if it's three or four or whatever, on Hampton Street. But yes, this is more of a, you know, five, I'm not sure if there's anywhere else in town where there's five besides townhouses. Those are all the answers to the questions or concerns that I have.
Okay, thank you.
If I could address a couple more of the, the structural, whether when we place the soil, it'll have to be up to building code, up to building code does require testing for the subsoil that we'll be placing the soil on, soil will be compacted, so it will be stabilized. With the existing construction on the site too, once we get over an acre of clearing, we have to do a construction general permit through the EPA, which will be during construction, make sure we're not doing any washouts or erosion control, and make sure there's some kind of stormwater management plan in place during construction, which is usually when it's more excessive than after the, the everything is, the topsoil is placed and the vegetation has been established. With, that's also in the works with, we've been contracted to do that, we're working with Bill, Chris Lund right now to, to get that done too, it's, you file that with EPA. The, the walls too do require the, the fence on the top for safety reasons, so it will restrict access to the back of the walls and the rear yards. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for me, or anything else from the board?
Is it going to require a pump for the sewage?
Yes.
Who's going to maintain the pump?
So each house, so basically what happens is, the town, the town, because the town has asked for an easement, because it's a private way, we would grant them an easement if this plan is approved, and they would maintain the water in the sewer line. And it, it's a- And it, it's a, basically like a two-inch PVC line. It's a common line, instead of like a regular, regular sewer main. So it's a two-inch that all the houses feed a one-inch line to the two-inch, and it pumps up to Hamp, to Elmwood Street.
It would be, that would be, E1's a proven system that's been used for decades and for the pump system. It's, the similar ownership would be like the lateral from the house, if it was a gravity system, would be the same kind of situation. Once it gets on the right of way, the town may or may not take over the, the system. We're pumping to, within the right of way, gravity manholes will, we're pumping all the system up to manholes, and the town will take over at least that manhole, and that pump goes by gravity into the system on Elmwood Street.
Sorry, thought of one more item. Drainage has always been a real issue over here. And like one of the abutters mentioned, there's a lot of washout that has occurred in the past, and we're addressing that with catch basins and a detention. So it just, all the water kind of pitches, and we have a berm on the right-hand side to direct all the water and keep it on the road and bring it into the catch basin, which there's no drainage currently at all.
Okay. Thank you. So some of the concerns I have with this project is going back to Mr. Knuth's property when I toured that. You know, I'd have to be honest, and I'm hoping I'm always taking my bounds here, but I observed the land in that area and the clearing that took place, and it seemed fairly disorganized, I have to be honest. It looked pretty difficult to do, no questions asked, but it also appeared to be fairly disorganized. One of the reasons that we granted Mr. Knuth his wall was because of the effect it was having on the, the road being widened and different things like that. So we granted him relief because of that, and to his credit, at his full expense. So that's the one thing that sort of concerns me, is that also, I kind of wish that you would have approached the town prior to clearing the lots to find out maybe, or, or someone to find out the best method for managing this issue from the beginning. So with that being said, I feel like, personally, I'm not speaking for the members of the board here, that I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, because I can see the value of repairing the drainage that these folks have living downhill there. But at the same time, I do not know if the project itself fits within the neighborhood. So that's really all I have for comment on it. There's a lot to think about, quite honestly. So, do I have any other members of the board that might be interested in adding anything to this? I'd like to kind of keep the discussion open if there's anything relevant or credible to add to it.
Through the chair, I have not heard any mechanism other than the good faith that you have shown with your abutters of speaking to them, but I haven't heard a mechanism to correct the issues that have been created right now.
But unfortunately, I don't think that's within our mandate.
That's what I'm saying, I'm looking for the mechanism.
I think the mechanism could be, as a board, we can send a letter formally to the town requesting that immediate observation and possible recommendation of action be taken. I don't think beyond that, we really have the mandate to do that.
If that is our mechanism, that is what I, I think I would like to see happen.
And he was putting in a swale, like, doesn't speak, right?
Yeah, but that's not, I, I was there, and if you see where that, that swale is, I mean, there's a lot of work. The rocks are piled high. When I stood there next to those rocks, I said, oh, boy, if one of these ever goes down this hill, and it's obviously happened. Anyways, again, that's why I use the term mechanism, I'm just looking for a mechanism, if we can refer it to the planning board, or to, to do something to correct what, what currently exists. Whether we grant or don't grant the permit, things are going to take some time, and within that timeframe, there's going to be some other issues that happen. Hopefully not.
Mr. Anatoli, want to add something?
Yeah, there really, again, it really isn't a mechanism only because, again, single-family lots, if they didn't put the two-family all out by right. What happens when there's issues where something encroaches on, it's civil, it's, you know, one neighbor would sue the other neighbor. The town really doesn't have a mechanism to interfere. If you wanted to cut a tree on your lot, and if it fell into the neighbor's lot, they would sue you, but the town can't tell you if it's a legal lot, you can't cut your tree.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I appreciate, you know, that something is done, but there really isn't a mechanism. It's a civil, something civil between the neighbors would have to do, unfortunately. I don't see building inspector or any part of the town having any control over that. We do have it when they come for a special permit on the subdivision, yes, and, and that's where that lies, here.
And that's where I find myself between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah.
So for the folks at home, what we're discussing here is that if the gentleman did not come before the board tonight for a special permit for duplexes, there'd be little or no course of action the town could take in terms of the development of the property for drainage, grading, et cetera. But now that they are before us for a special permit, we have the ability to put certain requirements on the permits. So, again, this is where I lie as a member of the board here. If we grant the permits for the duplexes, a lot of your issues downstream, so to speak, could be very easily resolved by putting up requirements on the permits. If we decide that we vote against this particular project, the gentleman still has the legal right, because it is his property to develop, but it also means that he has substantial more options in terms of how he finishes the property off, drainage, sewage, et cetera. So with that being said, this is what we're trying to do here, is come to a happy medium and do the right thing for everybody concerned. So with that knowledge said, I'm going to take the additional step of opening up back to the public. If anybody would like to have any more further input on it, with a little bit of knowledge that we have and understanding, I'd welcome you back to the podium and see if you have anything else to add.
Again, my name is Robert Anastasi, 166 Hampton Street. I actually do have something to mention. According to the proposed projects, it's part of the Auburn's Aquifer and Watership Protection Overlay Zoning District. So it actually does apply, and I guess it's property, I believe it's per zoning chapter bylaws, Aquifer Watership Protection Act Overlay District is to promote health and safety in the general welfare of the community, where I feel like this definitely applies. And while I understand that no specific improvements can be made with single-family homes, it, it's not necessarily out of the zoning board's jurisdiction, is my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to bring us back, if I may, to, I think, a very good point that you made earlier regarding this being a complex permitting issue, and that there were several things that you had mentioned that I agree with, that haven't been directly addressed based on the planning of this. The, the wall, for instance, the, the heights, the setback. And so I wonder if there would also be, and I know this is, you know, there's a lot on the table to, to consider, but I wonder if, if there would be an opportunity for, for these gentlemen to consider, based on the way this application has been filed before us, is to withdraw without prejudice as a recommendation, and take it back to a larger scope to include some of those additional items, if they so choose. And this isn't an attempt by any means to delay your processor, but that, that there are other considerations from a permitting perspective. And then during that time, if they were to withdraw at this time, to seek additional guidance from perhaps planning and conservation during that timeframe. But I think that there are other factors, other than just the section that they cite in their application, maybe seeking some additional advice on reapplying through the application process and addressing some of those other permitting issues.
That is also an option, and we could also recommend that we continue to next month as well, with the intention of pursuing further information. So that is, all those options around the table is what I'm trying to say.
And, and that final option would be, would be advantageous, I believe, in, in the best interest of, of many parties. I think that you spoke eloquently on trying to find the, the best solution to solve many of the concerns that the abutters and the public have brought forward. And I think that some additional study around this might be approved.
Ms. Roach? Given your area of expertise, I thought I'd ask if you have anything else to add before we close.
You always say that. I mean, I agree wholeheartedly. I think for the people who live in the neighborhood, if we deny it, then he can put five single families there and do whatever he wants. He's still going to have traffic. He's still going to have drainage. He's still going to have all the concerns that some of you seem to have, other than, obviously, it wouldn't be two families. But is that really helping you guys? I'm not sure. So I think, I think it would be in the best interest of everybody to try to figure out where could we meet in the middle that would satisfy you guys and, and put some conditions on them to help improve some of the issues that you have, but in turn then allow him to build, you know, what he would want to build. How we do that, I'm not sure, but I, I do agree that it's certainly worth exploring.
Thank you. If you'd like to approach the microphone, please.
Thank you again. Again, my name's Tricia Waldridge. I live at 15 Gibson Road. We have a meeting on Monday about the fill being used, and whether or not the fill approval goes through, how does that affect regardless of if it's duplexes or single families? And that's something that I'm curious about, because from what you're saying, regardless of if we, if you approve the duplex or single family, that'll happen, but does the fill affect that as well? If the fill doesn't get approved, I don't know how the building is affected, and how that, how any other things that, other questions or concerns can be addressed regarding whether or not it can get filled and if it can be built on the fill.
Okay, so now you said there's a meeting Monday?
Is it Monday? Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. And who is that with, please, for the record?
Do you have, yeah, who is it? Sorry. I'm curious.
The, it's the site plan review, the fill application permit with the planning board.
See, I was curious whether or not the fill has an effect of the building regardless of what type of structure goes in there.
Just wanted to chance to make a quick point. While I understand the argument that anything can pretty much be done with the zoning for single families, this issue, as far as the safety concerns of the area, were actually exacerbated by the clearing of the land. And the proposal of widening the road and stabilizing the area is used as an excuse to leverage the issue that was already exacerbated.
Thank you. Do you want to add something, Ms. Anatoli?
No, I appreciate it, but, I mean, the board's in a hard place because of what you're allowed to do by right as a property owner. When you own property, you have a bundle of rights, okay? There's only certain things that, you know, a town can do. So only certain powers, policing powers, one of them is zoning, which, kind of which we're doing here. But other than that, if they meet the criteria, what, that part of bundle of rights means you have the right to sell, you have the right to develop, enjoy your property. And that's hard for us to, to put encumbrances on, on someone who owns property. And believe me, we have to look at that, and it's hard, like your chair was saying, that, you know, we know the safety issues. Again, it's something that the board probably, hopefully, would want to explore some more. Naturally, the fill, as you were indicating, if it's something that has to be trucked in or moved, that's where the fill comes in. If they do to cut and, zero cut and fill, or anything like that from the property itself, then, you know, that doesn't come into play. Aquifer is basically impervious if they, if they have, if they're within, you know, the boundaries of amount they're having impervious, in other words, what they're paving, or there's, you know, we look at all that also, but once it's, everything in a meet criteria, it's very difficult for a board to put restrictions on it. So I really appreciate the dilemma here.
Yes, sir.
Just another comment or two. If it helps the board make a decision either way, I would personally be open to the option of putting two single families and three duplexes to try to break up the, you know, five duplexes here. My real gut feeling here is that it's better to upgrade Gibson Road than it is to try to go and do anything on High Ridge Road. I've been down there, I've, you know, met the abutters, and when I bought this property, trust me when I say, I was trying to do the right thing. And, you know, developed this in a nice way, and I originally did intend to do five duplexes, and then with the significant engineering costs and, and things that the town has, I don't want to say the town has put me through, but I've been through, let's just say, in this last year, it's been very challenging in trying to find a very reasonable solution to the difficult site. So I'm not sure if that helps or not, but I would be willing to, you could put that as a condition, that, you know, two single families and three duplexes, if that helps any of the concerns.
I'm not sure if we can modify the plan that substantially, based on the information we have here tonight. You'd probably have to come back before us again with rewritten plans and more specific requests.
Right. The, the site plan that we have and the proposed boxes were for either way, you know, so for me, it's, it's like that could, just my opinion, I'm not sure if you have the power, but, you know, you could make that a condition of the approval. But we made this site plan, so it was, if the duplexes didn't work, we were grading this the best way for what we thought the site, you know, to grade the site. And recently, we, with all the different delays and cost overruns with the project, we're trying to find a way to mitigate some of those costs by not having to upgrade High Ridge Road to...
So if you could just point out on that drawing for me, what would you like to change from duplex to single family? Which ones?
I, I don't really think it matters to me, to be honest.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking it might matter to our abutters, however.
Yep.
Based on the placement of those on the property.
Yep. I, I mean, I'm open to options there. The, the one other thing I wanted to, on a personal note, a lot of, a lot of the abutters had a very personal slant to their discussions, and I just wanted to let you know, my intent of buying this property was for me to build myself a house here. It's not just to go make money and, and leave it and not care about what happens later. My entire intent here was to try to develop this property. I'm renting right now in Auburn, and I'm trying to build myself a house here, to live here. So I'm happily to take a single family, but just so you know, I was planning on living in a half a duplex. I have a nice, very attractive building that I, I have proposed. And, but, you know, my gut feeling would be, I don't know, there's some nice views here, up here, you know, but there's really nice views there. I, I think it's a nice spot, even with a challenging grade, so I'm open to suggestions. I'm not really too concerned which ones went where.
These multi, so you're going to sell them, or are you going to rent them?
No, sell. Yep. And I do have actually a, a sketch, if, if the board's interested in looking, or the town. I'm not sure if it was included in your packet.
That's what I was looking through, and I don't see it.
I don't see it. I don't see it.
If the board's familiar with Dale Ab off of Rochdale Street?
Mm-hmm.
It's, I kind of got the idea from there, and, you know, tried to find something that would fit well. Was a simple box, when you look underneath, so the cost to build wasn't ridiculous, but had a very nice curb appeal to it, and has a very nice front elevation.
I don't know if any of the folks that came would like to see those in honor, if you've already seen them?
Yes, I see it.
You're more welcome, if you could just pass it over? So while we're giving the folks here, the abutters that came this opportunity to see the proposed duplexes, I really just want to take a minute to say thank you all for coming, and I appreciate your honesty and your civility. I think this is a, a good example of what government should be doing at work. I want to thank the members of the board also for giving thoughtful input, and also you gentlemen for presenting nicely tonight.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. I appreciate it all. So I don't think there's really much more we can add to this scenario right now, so I'm going to make a motion to close I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is there a motion on the floor? Hearing none, seeing none? I would like to make a motion that we continue this hearing until December 18th at 7:00 PM when we get the first hearing, with the intention of furthering the information that we have, allowing the folks at home to see a little bit more about what's going on with the plan, providing these gentlemen with the opportunity to come up with an alternative plan if they are interested in submitting for a different number of houses versus duplexes type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't they have to withdraw this petition because whether it was three and two, two and three, the application we have is for five duplexes?
Mm-hmm.
So in order for that to happen, they would have to withdraw this petition.
I agree. I'm just trying to find a way that we can bring this forward next month and allow everyone concerned here to have the opportunity to re-group, come back with maybe some other alternative proposals. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Anatoly pointed out it doesn't look complex, we have to open the hearing back up, if that's what we're gonna do.
Oh.
So we have to just keep it for discussion now. If my motion does not continue, we'll open the hearing back up.
Do you want to withdraw?
If those gentlemen would choose to do that, then they can at that point. So if my motion does not stand, then we can do that. So do I have a second on my motion? Take it or we mail?
No, I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a vote on the motion? To continue the public hearing until next, or continue the hearing until next month?
Can we open for discussion on the motion?
We can continue, yes.
I would, I would be in favor of amending the motion, or suggesting that we amend the motion, Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of, of continuation, and I am in agreement to continue, but what I'd like to do is give these gentlemen an opportunity to present not just what, and I understand the flexibility that they've been offering of, of changing the configuration around, but what I would, what I would be interested in seeing in a re-proposal is not necessarily that, or if that's part of their desire, but really an address of some of the other issues, and if there's an opportunity between now and that time, and I'd also be interested in if we don't want to wait an entire month, we could have a, a closer meeting, call a special meeting for it, if, if a month presents a hardship for timeframe, but, but I'd like to see addressed, and if we can give them some coaching in any way, on how they would reapply addressing other zoning articles, other, other areas that need to be addressed in the permitting process, some of the things that you had mentioned earlier. So I, I know that, that's a mouthful, so, and I apologize, but I...
That's okay. We're trying to get to the...
Understood.
Best course of action.
Exactly, and, and the, the revision of the motion would be to, if, if it's possible to apply some coaching or support for them to, to redress some of the other issues, the other permitting issues, and, and have them come before us, and if that means a reconfiguration in addition, but some of the other things that have been left off that I think would, would need addressed in the permitting process.
I don't think we can add those to this particular motion, because if we're making suggestion as agents of the town, therefore that would be something that would be presumed to be acceptable under the permitting process, and I don't think we have the authority to do that as well. So I think that would be something that we would probably not be able to add. And again, I have no hard feelings about withdrawing my motion and open the hearing back up and see if the gentleman would like to withdraw. I think that, that's certainly an option. So with that being said, is there a motion on the floor to vote in favor or deny the, my proposal?
I think you had your motion seconded.
Right, we did, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, the first time I actually agree with a, being voted against that strongly. So I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Motion to reopen?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so is there a proposal you gentlemen might like to suggest?
Could you just do me a favor and explain my options here?
So right now, what we're trying to do is resolve this issue with all parties concerned. I think without overstepping my bounds, the suggestion might be that to withdraw and come back with a separate type of plan in place, and then addressing some of the permitting issues that we publicly mentioned here, such as the 12-foot retaining walls and other items, and be a little more prepared with those. So if you reviewed your own plan and you looked at some of the other issues regarding permitting, and then talked about maybe the possibility of changing the number of duplexes and single-family homes, and again, this is merely a suggestion, I cannot require you to do that, but you have the option of withdrawing without prejudice if you'd like, and then we can waive your fees for, to be applied to another permit if possible.
And the other option was maybe continuing and working with you, I kind of like that idea.
Okay, well, as far as working with us concerned, as a board, we're not really authorized to give you specific suggestions, that would be beyond our scope and mandate, however, you could work with the building inspector and possibly other members of your engineering firm, come up with other alternatives, that would work, but as a board, our hands are tied as far as giving you specific suggestions as far as developments concerned.
Would you be able to summarize your issues?
Well, again, I think if, we've discussed it here, and you're certainly welcome to get a copy of the minutes of the meeting, those are public record, so we had discussed the 12-foot walls, I think some of the neighbors' concerns that you've addressed and taken notes on would probably be well-served. Otherwise, I think I'd be beyond my scope as a chair to be able to give you any further information on that.
All right, just one second.
Yeah, absolutely, take your time.
They broadcast the meeting on television as well, so you could watch it.
I'm reporting it.
We would prefer to continue and, you know, take the feedback from the minutes and the butters, and I think we'll have a little more information after our meeting with the planning board as well.
Okay.
I do have a question, maybe my engineer already knows this, but I'm wondering, is the permitting for the 12-foot high wall a height thing or because it crosses a property line?
Yeah, it would be a height requirement, actually.
Okay, you need a variance, is it a variance that you need or a special permit for, I guess I'm, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that.
Need to speak with the building inspector on that.
Right, the building inspector will determine based on your application whether you'd be applying for a variance or a special permit based on your individual need at the lot.
Okay. The only problem with the building inspector right now is there, you know, two kind of part-time, no specific building inspector, so...
Yes.
That could be a little challenging, but we'll do the best I can.
Okay, I, I do appreciate that, recognize that there is an interim situation on with the town, but I'm confident that if you do diligence and make things happen quickly, we can probably move substantially forward at the next meeting in December.
Okay, we'll continue, that's okay.
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Understand if you continue this hearing, you will be continuing it under the current application that we have. Okay, and my feeling that I'm getting is that you would like to modify that. Okay, and, and if you do modify it, I think the better course of action for you would be to withdraw this and come back next month with the modified proposal that you have. I think that leaves more options for you versus continuing under the current application.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and, and so I absolutely agree with, with my fellow board member, it, so it, what, what I was suggesting earlier, and I appreciate the correction on, on the level of guidance that we would be able to provide, but I think that what we're recognizing is that there are certain areas in your current application that are missing, that are not addressing issues within your plan, and that if we were to continue currently, we would only be able to make a ruling on what you're presenting. My polite suggestion would be to take this back so that you might add additional elements and repropose. If you don't repropose, as Mr. Chacolo had indicated, that we would, we would still only be able to take the action on what you're proposing in front of us, so you wouldn't be able to add those additional elements that we are trying to guide in an appropriate way.
But let me just make some clarity on that. If you were coming back before us next month under 3.2.2.1 and with the five duplexes as it is, and then you are adding, say, the permits for the retaining walls for a suggestion, or other items, we can add those on, we've done that recently in the past. If you intend to modify the plan to change the number of homes versus duplexes and single families, then I think that would be a different situation as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, I stand corrected then. We, he can amend...
Well, we've done it recently, and I think that based on our past practice, we can add another section.
Relief, for certain sections, but my contention was that it left more options for them if they wanted to modify as they had stated.
As it stands now.
They stated they wanted to modify, so...
I, I appreciate that point.
Just for clarity.
No, but that's a great point of clarity, because what I was really honing on on was those additional relief items, that, that if they were able to add to this, then, then I stand corrected.
So I think, are we all understanding that we're on the same page here as far as what we can and can't do based on what your application is here this evening?
I think so. My, a question is, it's more of a timing thing to get, if we withdraw, then we have to republizize and, and that whole ball of wax with deadlines and things. I don't know what the deadline is for the next submission to get in to the December 18th meeting with the holidays, like, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It's 14 days regardless of when it's publicized in the paper.
Okay.
So, I mean, you would have ample amount of time to do that as well, but there is the additional advertising cost that would have to be responsible for upfront.
Right.
So with all that being said, I just want to make sure that all the folks at home, the people here that are sitting here this evening, and you as well, are all fully informed before you make a decision on which way you'd like to move forward. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm really leaning towards changing the number of duplexes, so I just want to be clear, can I do that by continuing, or do I need to withdraw? If I can amend it, I'll amend it and add other detail, but if, if the current application needs to be withdrawn in order to change the number of duplexes, then I'll withdraw.
So I'm gonna defer this part of the question to Mr. Anatoly with his years of experience and expertise on the board and...
He could amend, he could amend the plan, just like if you were to go through a peer review, and the peer review suggests changes to the plan.
Okay.
It's no different.
So you're comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, with that being said then, again, citing Mr. Anatoly's years of experience on the board and knowledge in the area, then I think that we are comfortable with saying that you can choose to continue to next month, come back with a modified plan, as well as the additional requirements that we had all spoken of, and possibility of satisfying some of the neighbors' needs, and then we can redress this next month.
That sounds good.
I'm sorry?
That sounds good.
Okay.
That sounds like a plan, I would like to continue if...
So I think what I need you to do is formally request that you could withdraw your application, and I need to vote on it.
No, I'd like to continue.
No, we'll continue, continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like to continue this meeting to December 18th, please.
I'm getting a little confused myself, it's been a long meeting. So if you could request that it be continued to next month.
Yes, could we please continue this meeting to next month?
Thank you. Okay, so now I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to continue this hearing until next month, which would be December 18th at 7:00 PM?
I would make a motion that we would continue this hearing until next month, December 18th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed?
I am.
Okay. But I am in favor, so therefore it stands. So thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you all for attending, and I appreciate your patience and time during this somewhat complex issue.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's a good point. So the folks at home, this is a December 18th at 7 o'clock meeting, if you'd like to re-attend, and because this is a continuation, you will not be re-notified formally by the town, I believe, so if you just want to make note of that.
7, they said 7, yeah. Really? Oh, right, because it has to get on the, okay. That was pretty serious.
I was trying, I'm trying to...
Yeah.
Oh, just continue. We have some signatures to do.
We still have minutes, the meeting is not over. We still have minutes to do?
I, no, we still have signatures.
Signatures and minutes.
Yep.
She did? We're still going to have a five-minute recess, so we'll let the room clear out, let the noise settle, but I have a motion on the floor for a five-minute recess.
For a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go into a five-minute recess, let the room clear out, let the noise settle. Okay, so we're back for the folks at home. Do I have a motion to come out of recess?
Motion to come out of recess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we really just have some housekeeping issues to take care of for the rest of the meeting here. I have a written decision for Selva Street Holding, 619 Selva Street, special permit that I believe you will have already approved, if you'd just sign that form, please.
I wasn't... Yep, that's it, that's it.
Okay, so I have the minutes of the meeting. Because of our sort of flux and change we've had the last few months, we've had some issue with the minutes in the meeting, and fortunately, Ms. Westerman has been very nice and gracious to come and help us with the minutes, we really appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
So we have May, June, July, August, September, October minutes still pending that we have to approve.
Okay.
So what I would like to do is make sure that after Mrs. Westerman submits those, I'm gonna put a package together, and then we'll have it on the agenda for next month, we'll give you ample opportunity to review them all. There'll be no substantial changes, but I just want to give you all the opportunity to review them and refresh them in your memories, and then we'll sign off on those next month, if that's okay?
Sure.
Do I have a motion on the floor to make that happen?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May, June, July, August, September, October, at the December meeting.
Fantastic. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a second.
Are you opposed? Okay, so moving forward to new business. I had a brief discussion this evening before the meeting with the town manager regarding the alternates on the board issue, and so it's somewhat complex, I have to do my best to explain it, that right now, as the history of the bylaws and charters and everything else in town, there really is no documentation for alternates beyond what we had submitted earlier, which is just the zoning board bylaws. So they have just asked us to exercise caution that alternate members have the right to have input on decisions or input during hearings, but not to vote on decisions until we can resolve this issue. So town council is still officially researching the issue, but what has been proposed is that a bylaw be written, or the alternative option is to leave it as is now and no longer have alternates on the board. So with that being said, the recommendation that we take an opinion either way, what we'd like to do, so what they're asking us, if we decide to move forward with no alternates, and again, please keep in mind, this will be on the agenda for next meeting, we can't make any action on it now because it has not been advertised. So for the next meeting, I want you all to have consideration that we're gonna put this on the agenda. So our options here are that we have no alternates... So our options here are that we have no alternates at a certain date to move forward, or we request that the appointing authority and the boards write a bylaw specifically allowing for alternates on, I believe it would be just for this board, but it may also contain the other boards in town. So I'm not sure how, where they're going to word that part of it.
Okay.
So I just want you to be well-informed that that's what's going on with it, I am keeping up with it.
Who would be writing the bylaw?
Well, I believe the bylaw itself would likely be written by town council, it would be reviewed by the appointing authorities, and then it would probably be brought forward to a town meeting. I would assume that's the entire process, but it would be required to go since we have a town meeting, formal government, to have ultimate approval.
Yeah.
So with that being said...
That would postpone any decision until the spring.
It could indeed postpone a decision until the spring of the town meeting, and there could also be whether or not the attorney general's office has to review it and give a 90-day approval therefore afterwards, but it would still give us the opportunity, if we so chose, to keep our current alternate members and have them provide input and...
If that's the way they wrote the bylaw.
If that's the proposed bylaw. The proposed bylaw. So what I'm, I'm just trying to duly inform everyone for that. For the next meeting, we're going to openly discuss this publicly, we're going to advertise it, so I want you all to be prepared what your opinions are, A, keep alternates, B, no longer have alternates, and whichever way it is that we're going to recommend to the board to move forward, but we can't really have much further discussion because it hasn't been publicly advertised, I'm just publicly informing you that the next meeting is what we need to be...
It's going to be discussed.
Yes, we need to be prepared to discuss.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one final question, and I appreciate the non-discussion at this time, but appreciate the disclaimer, but the, so there's a decision to be made on a recommendation. Will we vote on that decision here as a board?
We will vote next meeting on the recommendation on how we would move forward in terms of whether we believe that as a board we should keep alternates, believe as a board we should no longer retain alternates, but if we decide to keep it, we should also have to recommend that the alternates be written into a formal bylaw, so they have basically good standing.
Okay, and that'll be the five-member vote, okay.
And that would be the five-hour vote, correct. Okay, so... Indeed it is.
Have you ever looked into, because if it's, you know, other towns, what they, what they're, they do for this, because it's pretty much the board itself, again, on the organization of the board, it's not really mandated by anything, there's no real state law, and I don't even understand the impetus of, that's triggering not having alternate members.
Well, I think it just...
I mean, I mean, that's been brought up by, you know, the two new members, I guess, and for whatever reason, they don't like the way that has been going on.
I don't think that's part of the discussion, I think what I'm just trying to present to you is that I had a brief conversation with the town manager, I was told that at the next meeting, we could publicly put it on the agenda for discussion, as long as we have enough time to advertise it, and that the options on the table are to either keep alternates or no longer have alternates, and if we choose to keep the alternates, that it would be in our best interest as a board to recommend that a bylaw be written in order to have basically things etched in stone, if you will.
It's probably more charter than bylaw, but...
Well, she specifically mentioned bylaw, so if that satisfies her and the appointing authority and the town council, then I'm happy with it as well.
Is the town council looking into that, as far as you know?
He is...
Whether or not it comes from a charter or a bylaw?
I believe that is all part of the discussion, yes.
Okay.
So with that being said, I just want to, again, duly inform you guys, the folks at home, all the members of the board, that this is what's been going on with it, I have been pursuing it, but again, keep in mind with this major land purchase that's just taken place in the last few weeks to a month, that I'm sure this has probably been sideburned for a little while, while he focuses on the legal issues regarding this major land purchase the town just engaged in, so that's probably part of the delay as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion with new business, other than what I just spoke of?
No, I'll hold my comments until next week.
December 18th, right?
Yes, December 18th at 7 o'clock at the next meeting. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone who wants to say? Thank you very much, good night.